Our 7:00 p.m. hearing is a site plan for construction of a three-story residential building at 72 Masonic Street, North Hampton ID 31D-124. Is there a presentation from the applicant?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Bartini. I am an architect of Berkshire Design. And this is Robert Harrison. He's also an architect with Berkshire Design. And we have Rob Beal who is a senior architect with us. So I'm assuming you all have the drawings in front of you. But before we get into the drawings, we just wanted to sort of figure out, you know, context, where we are, where the project's happening. So we just, you know, prepared a few slides to just sort of put it in context. So this is 72 Masonic, which runs directly behind the street. So this is a quick, and I apologize to all of you, it is kind of hard to see on the screen. We do have some hard copies, if anybody wanted to see it up closer, if that would help, just let us know, we can distribute some of them. So this, I'm assuming there are some butters here and some owners here. So each of the blue blocks that you see on the screen represents the buildings that directly surround the building that we're talking about, 72 Masonic. And the one with the star is the actual property of 72 Masonic. So each of the blue blocks has a picture that just sort of corresponds, which just gives you an idea of what the buildings around it look like, and sort of what the current pedestrian and traffic flow sort of is. It's a tight little area back there. So, and then, we wanted to sort of talk about the existing ground cover, just sort of give an overview of each of the major sort of areas which we'd be talking about tonight. So this is the existing building, and as you can see, it's mostly pavement and there is some gravel. You can see by the photos, it was taken during the fall, so there are some leaves on the ground. But it, there's very little grass, it is mostly pavement and it is gravel. So that's sort of the existing. And then we'll talk about the trees later, because there are some trees on this property that we'll be interested in. So the existing building, it's an office building, it's a two-story office building, and you, it's hard to see in the photos here, but there is a system of gutters that work its way around, it looks like a residence, but it works its way around the structure. And so each of the yellow dots on there correspond with the downspouts that currently collect water from the gutter system and distribute it onto the site. And then there are three trees. Only one could actually sort of say that it was on the property completely, and that is the pear tree that you see to the upper left there. It's a small pear tree. And then there are two, there are two quite larger trees. One is the sugar maple, that is at the very top right, and that is not on the property, but obviously, there could be some impact by this construction. And then sort of straddling the property, our property and the restaurant that is on the adjacent property, is the silver maple tree. There is a fence right now that runs into both sides of that tree, so it was really hard to sort of get a breast height, but it was estimated at seven feet off the ground to be about thirty-six and a half inches in diameter. So we sort of estimated at breast height, it might be about forty-five inches, somewhere in that vicinity, just to give you sort of an idea. And that sort of stratosphere defines, and we do have a plan in place for those trees. But I just wanted to at least give you an idea of sort of where things are located and show you what's existing. So you can see that there is an existing structure. It's in the bottom-left drawing, it is the dash line is the existing footprint of the house or the office building as it exists now. And then the poshed area is what is proposed. And what is proposed is going to be a three-story condominium. So you can see the square footage isn't increasing that much, but we're also trying to meet the zoning setback requirements. So the structure itself will get a little bit closer to the existing, there's a fence line that, as I mentioned, is on either side of that large tree. So we are getting a little bit closer to that fence line and to that tree, but that is to sort of meet that five-foot maximum setback on the Masonic side of the street. So the existing square footage is thirteen twenty-five, and when I say existing square footage, it's really the footprint. So what is, what actually covers the ground at the moment. And the proposed is fourteen fifty-six. So there's, it's not really increasing a whole lot. But that being said, we do, the existing foundation is not in the greatest shape, so removing it and pouring a new foundation obviously has an impact on site, even if there aren't, you know, isn't a whole lot of increase in square footage.
What is, sorry, what is the proposed square footage again?
So it's one thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet.
So my grid says fifteen seventy-five?
Yep. So we have actually decreased that.
So the L 1.0 has the fourteen fifty-six.
So just to give you an idea, from the street, sort of what visually this thing might look like, and I know we're sort of more concerned with site and impact, but just wanted to give you an overview of what this project will look like on the site, just so you have some idea of maybe what that footprint and what the impact might be. So you can see the top photos are the proposed. It's a three-story structure. And then the bottom photos is what is existing. So you can sort of see, this is as if you were standing in front of Bella and you're looking straight back, and then maybe as you're approaching Bella from down the street, what the project would look like. And then as we work our way around the site, you can see on the right-hand side is what it would look like from behind, that parking lot behind the building, and then sort of continuation of the alleyway, just to the left of it. So the, the height doesn't increase too much, but it, you know, it is, and the footprint doesn't increase so much. It's, it's a nicer residential sort of feeling, building. And then what we're showing on the screen now is actually what is sort of in front of you, or the drawings. So I don't know if you want me to go through each of these, or if you have questions, I don't know what sort of what your format is, or how you go through this.
So typically what we do is hear your presentation, and then you have some time in the board to ask you technical questions.
Okay.
We try to, to again, be specific about technical questions and clarifications, and then you're from the public, and then we'll have discussion among the board.
Okay.
So, you know, we have all had a chance to, to look at the plans. I did see, maybe you could talk about, there was a later submittal about refuse removal and specifically, you know, if you can maybe just talk a little bit more about the site specificity for, you know, the building itself, and where some of those, you know, parking and bicycling, where that'll be, that would be helpful.
Okay, great. So let's sort of cycle through. So again, I apologize, this may be hard to see. Would it be helpful to any of you to have, we have a larger size set, I don't know if that would help you to look at, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Just to clarify, why we have two segments, one is slightly smaller, and the other one is both dated, probably.
You may have gotten, it's maybe because one was sent to the Central Business Architecture Committee, I don't know if you're a lead-up, the way she packaged them, that she sent to the Central Business.
Do you want me to turn the seats around maybe, with that a little?
Same, okay.
It's hard with the drawings.
We'll have a Twitter meeting. But just focus on the one that says planning for review set.
So if you want to go to L 1.0?
We're just checking, because we all received two copies of the plan, so we're just trying to make sure we all have.
They were updated.
And they both say twelve eight, so I don't know. So one set includes more plans.
Yeah, so that would, that would be the most recent.
The one with revision date in the upper right is twelve twenty-one. Right, so on page one, for board members of the plan, the twelve twenty-one revision is what we want to be looking at.
So currently, there, the parking situation is, I don't, we're not sure exactly legally how many parking spots are on the building as it exists now on the site. But what we're proposing is that we can legally get three parking spots onto that site with the building that will comfortably fit. And that includes a walkway that gets you safely to the front door. And you can see sort of off, if you're looking at the, either plan I guess, if you're looking at sort of the lower right-hand corner next to that car, we have designed a refuse area. So it will be, let me see if I can find a plan that has, maybe towards the end. So you can sort of see an A 2.0. It's really just a screening. It's about six feet high, and it's enough that you can get good-sized garbage bins there, but also, you know, anybody who, you know, you don't always, people aren't always neat about their garbage, may end up with garbage on top of this. So we tried to design high enough so that that screen does not at all sort of pollute the site visually. So it's about six feet high, and it is wood construction, and we painted to match the house so it will fit in, and all the same elements and design style as the pre condos. And maybe it'll see, so you can see it here in these renderings that are on A 2.2. We apologize, this one, you may be surprised by the lack of sight on this, but that is correctly how the refuse removal location would be situated in comparison to the condos. Go back to the site plan. So currently, like I mentioned, there is a gutter system, and there is a series of downspouts that connects. So you can see there are multiple roofs here, this is the existing here. So it's gable, it's a gable roof, and a series of gutters collects the water and takes in the downspouts and moves it off of the, or brings it onto the site so that it can slowly disperse. Our proposal, you can see, you can sort of see diagrammatically here, but there will be, it's just going to be one roof, so all of the water will now be flowing off the back. There will be a gutter system or a sheet flow system, but at the bottom of that, there will be a system of gravel to allow the water to, before it leaves the site, it gets absorbed and sort of, and ideally, what we would like to do is, when the tree situation, once we get that established and we've considered the exact, what we're going to do is try to, we're going to keep the trees. We are going to do everything we can, and we're going to work with the arborist and the civil engineer, and the entire project team is going to work to keep the trees. So ideally, what we could do is try and direct some of that runoff from the roof so that they are getting the extra water and irrigation that they need. After construction, they will also obviously need some TLC, they're going to need some extra fertilization, they're going to need any sort of nicks that may have occurred, they're going to need sort of wound treatment. So all of that will be done afterwards. But hopefully, all of this works together in conjunction, so all of the water that leaves the building will have a way to filter and make its way to these trees and the new Ideally, these trees will stay and they will remain, and hopefully they will thrive. But in the event that they don't, the property owner has been made aware and is okay down the road, if the trees do not survive, they will be replanted. The prospective buyers of this property is going to replace the trees.
Excuse me, didn't, did, did I hear you say that the water from the entire roof would be absorbed by an area of gravel?
So ideally, right now, it would be gravel, yes. But again, we're going to work very closely with the arborist and civil engineer to make sure that, because it's so close to that property line, we absolutely do not want to affect the neighboring property. So we have to work very closely with them to make sure that the water was properly absorbed into the land.
Does water percolate through frozen gravel?
So gravel has, yes, to some degree, yes. But again, we'll have to work very closely to figure out exactly what that material is to give the best chance of not affecting any of the neighboring properties. And ideally, we would be able to direct them.
The plan you proposed is just to have gravel there?
Yeah, yeah, at the moment, we're, that seems to be the best route.
And just to question for Carol, this project is not big enough to require stormwater permit, is that right?
Right, it's, so there are two thresholds that it does not exceed, the first is, it's not over an acre, so it doesn't trigger a separate DPW stormwater permitting review and process. The other thing is, it's less than five thousand square feet, so it doesn't require a full stormwater analysis, and at which point, the DPW would review full-scale stormwater management. The existing conditions obviously are almost a hundred percent impervious, so they need to sort of match what's existing. There is, I would have a concern, especially given the arborist report that indicates the soils are poor and it's an urban situation, that it may not be realistic to assume that a gravel trench will be sufficient to absorb all the water. However, all the water is leaving the site currently. So, you know, I think it's, depending on how it's designed, it may provide a little bit better situation than the current situation. But that also is tied into what the site looks like. You all probably want to have a broader, a deeper discussion about the trees and the impact on the trees, particularly given the arborist report.
Right.
So, but the, the baseline requirement for stormwater runoff is no worse than exists right now?
Right.
But, I mean, it seems like, because currently there is these gutters, and they drop the water in different places, right?
Right.
So, I mean, I'm not a gutter expert, but it just seems like right now, the current method is dropping all the water in one place, whereas before, basically it was going to four corners of the property.
Right, and DPW had the same comment, and, and concern about not having enough information about where that water, how much volume is being distributed to the north side versus being distributed to four different corners, you know, under the current scenario, and of course, there's the, east, the driveway that flows to Masonic Street. So water now coming off that side potentially is captured in catch basins down the driveway, but it's not clear because that wasn't, that's not been modeled, so it is a question.
What's, I'm sorry, in terms of like, the property that it would effectively affect, I mean, is there any, I guess State Street is, is there?
It's the parking lot of State Street.
Parking lot, so, to a certain extent, the, affecting property is not like someone's house is a gravel, I mean, it's a parking lot.
I guess the back of Mosaic, right, would be the, the, the parking lot of State Street and the garden, outdoor seating for Mosaic.
Okay.
That would be, there's just a.
I'm just trying to figure out, like, you know.
Yeah.
What's the, the downspouts that are proposed? Did you say that there would be, it would all be directed to the rear of the property, and there would be down, how many downspouts there?
So currently, there are four downspouts, and they're all directed to the rear of the property. So the new roof system would still allow the water to move to the rear of the property, and whether we install a gutter system with downspouts, or whether we do the sheet flow. The sheet flow would more evenly distribute it, and the gravel would also not allow so much splashback onto the house and onto the foundation. So while we also want to keep the water from moving to the neighboring property, we also don't want to backfeed it into the foundation.
So at present, you said it, even though it's a shed, a gable roof now, so it goes in two directions at a minimum, but it all is directed to the rear of the property?
All of the downspouts are facing to the rear of the property.
So I was incorrect, oh, you're saying, you're telling me that they're all back?
No, so there are four different locations, it's just that all of, so at the bottom of the downspouts, there are flexible, there's a flexible gutter material that directs all of the water to the back of the property, which if it was grass, would actually, you know, allow more absorption and filtration, but most of the site, all of the site is almost impervious with pavement. So essentially, it's all being washed to the back of the site right now. And the goal is, you know, yes, right now, it's gravel and it's pavement, but ideally, we would love to be able to get more pervious material into the site.
So just to clarify, so DPW had questions, but there's on the runoff, but those are questions that don't need to be answered by the applicant because of the size of the footprint?
I think they need to be, you all need to be satisfied as a board that they're not changing the, that the flow patterns are not going to affect, negatively affect surrounding properties, so it's the same situation as currently exists today, but they don't need to provide full stormwater calculations because they're below that threshold that's in the site.
So we don't have a report to reference to make that decision?
Right, if the applicant is willing to work with their, the engineers to find the best solution, can we condition that that best solution is shared and signed off on by the DPW?
No. I think what, and I guess it's, I see it here now, I think DPW had the same, I guess interpreted the plan similarly to, as I mentioned, is what Sam was suggesting, is that there were four different points of discharge. But in fact, if all the water's running to the back now, and in the current, in the proposed condition, the same situation is happening, then, then I think that's showing you that those, that there won't be any difference, except that if there is additional landscaped area on the site, that would potentially actually improve conditions over existing conditions.
Maybe as we move along in the hearing, we'll hear from some of butters about conditions as they've existed the past couple of years, and what we might kind of pay attention to in that driveway scenario.
Carrie?
Yeah.
My name is Robert Harrison, I'm also an architect with Berkshire Design. I just, I want to point out.
Feel free to go ahead and put it in.
Sure. I just wanted to point out, again, so all the water is currently directed to the back, the proposed is all the water gets directed to the back. I would like to point out that concentrating all the water off of essentially the same-sized roof into four points is going to drive more water off the site than allowing a sheet of that same volume to come down, even on an impervious, but even on gravel, it's going to be less water, less runoff, less force, as it leaves the property in the same direction.
Thank you. Can you just walk us through the site lighting plan?
Yes. So I'm going to ask for your assistance here. So we do now have more information regarding, so this is, this is the building footprint where the lighting location may be.
And we don't have this sheet?
Yep, exactly, we have them. So would you like me to distribute? We have that sheet along with some other information.
Sure, yeah, if you have topics, yes, please.
So I'll distribute if you want to give us a synopsis. So these are the lights that have been selected, you can see on the front, and also the bulbs that go in those lights. And then the last sheet, which you see on the screen, is sort of the impact along the entire site, but most importantly, along the property lines, what that impact will be. And it's hard to read those numbers, but Rob, then walk me through what exactly that means.
If you look at this one.
Yeah, oh, okay, so you got it, so I think I only have six, do you want to share any? And maybe share, let's see.
If you want to share.
And then I have one, one extra. Oh, do you need, do you need one?
No, no, I can just have them referenced there.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, basically, and you can see the first sheet on that, is the lighting fixture that has been proposed for the site, and as Carrie had pointed out, the bulb that they were planning, that we were planning to use here. And if you look at the plan, we have, it shows on the plan two locations for lighting, but there's actually four in the whole building. On the right-hand side, that's where the decks are located, and so there's one on each deck stacked upon each other, and on the left side, you can see the red dot where the lighting is used at the main entry. And, don't know how many, how often you've seen these plans, but you can see the number of the footcandle output in the perimeter of the site, and we made sure that this fixture doesn't exceed the point five foot candles at the property line.
So what is worst-case scenario, the property line, what is the sort of highest that we get?
The highest is, there's a, there's a point four.
So sort of up here, I mean, is there any impact?
No, no, there's no, there's no impact on the, on Masonic, on, on the passageway. It all, it all comes down to below point five prior to the property line itself.
So there's safe levels for the users, but it doesn't pollute the neighbors?
Questions about light?
There's a question by staff on the color temperature of the lamp, but it looks like with this information, it's not the four thousand, it's twenty-seven hundred?
Yes.
Is that correct? Is that a soft white, it's not hard?
It's not, it's not hard.
We have no cooler than three thousand.
Correct. Right, so they're showing twenty-seven hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Other technical questions from the board before we open things up to public comment? So thank you so much for all your information. At this time, we'll take comments from the public, we ask that come on one at a time, and please give us your name and address. Any other comments from the public? If there are no comments from the public, we'll have discussion among the board about a variety of issues.
Well, I, I would.
I thought if I get one more call.
I'm Alex Gable, 164 Riverside Drive, and one of the owners of seventy Masonic, seventy and seventy-six Masonic Street. And I've seen a lot of changes there, and certainly welcome infill and more residential presence downtown, all those good things. It's going to be quite a construction season in a very narrow place, and everybody needs to continue to have access into that, so good luck. The, the only thing I see, and I, you know, I'm going to obviously have to probably survey the line, but it's ambiguous, I don't, I think that the, that the line that, that runs along what they have labeled the public walkway, which cuts right through the center of the pear tree, I think is more to the right. I think the pear tree really is on our property, but I think it might be determined by a survey.
Yeah, absolutely, and again, it will be taken care of. So if it is actually your tree, we're, we're taking every precaution we can to make sure that that tree survives.
Well, they planted them and they, and it's grown very well. You know, it's really hard to understand, SUTS made huge difference, SUTJOLI with the construction behind the, the fire station, but we certainly learned to live with it and like it. So, I don't, you know, I don't have any, I don't have any real objection, I just, the process getting from where we are now to the finished building, I think is going to I think is going to be painful. I will say.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Are there any water issues at all currently?
I don't think so.
Not really on our property, no.
Discussion among the board. We need to talk about trees.
Can I just, I just don't know how you run, are we allowed to comment when you comment or are we supposed to say?
So we keep our public hearing open so that as we have more questions, we'll ask you to come back up and answer questions, and we'll continue to kind of do that as we figure out the current conditions and make sure we understand, you know, all the elements of the plan. We won't close our public hearing until we're at a point where we're comfortable, you know, taking a vote. So if there was something you wanted to add before we have some discussion, come on up and feel free. Otherwise, I think once we kind of start having our conversation, we'll have some more questions for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
If you're about to say something. Are you about to say something?
Sure.
You look like you were about to say something.
So I have a question about the parking spaces for the cars. Could we look at that again?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's three parking spaces, theoretically, one per floor or one per apartment?
Yep, so one per unit.
One per unit, and they are all in, along the wall. I think that's the front of the building, the walkway down the far left?
Yeah, so there, so to the far left, there is one parking spot, a nine by 18 or nine and a half by 18. And then right between that spot and the one that's perpendicular to it is a five-foot walkway that we will designate.
And the bicycle rack is right along the walkway, basically?
So, yeah, so the bicycle rack is, we had labeled the public walkway, but what has come to our attention is that it's not actually a public walkway. We realize that it's a walkway that probably is used quite heavily because of the parking lot that's there and that the public does use it. But, so our idea was to put the bike rack along that side of the building so that it is away from the cars as far as what might be coming off of the Sonic Street, but also, so there's a little more safe passage and safe storage. And we are going to make that a public walkway. So there will be enough storage for nine, so there's only three options, there could be not up to nine bikes there.
You could make the point that you have a garage.
So all of them are nine by 18, or nine and a half by 18 and all?
Do you want to make a comment to the board?
Yeah, do I, can I just say, I'm Marjorie Hesse, and I live at 70 Masonic Street, the Red House. So I'm a little concerned about, well, about two, I mean, we're going to be very close neighbors.
Yes, for sure.
You know, we were able to look in your windows when you were working way there. I mean, I assume we will, we will be quite, you know, close together. So our top floor will be looking directly.
Yeah, so your top floor would used to look at a roof, now you may be seeing some windows. Good news is that the building's moving up a little bit closer to the other property line, so where the bike rack is, is basically where the wall was now.
Okay, and then, I'm still confused on parking, because we have to be able to get into our garage.
Ah, so let me, so.
Our garage.
Let's go back up.
Right, to the first, so we're the red building.
Yep.
And our garage is closest to the house.
Let me just see if I can find a picture. Okay, so here we are. So, yeah, so that is, so right now where the property line is, the parking will not spill over the existing parking line. But I understand your concern. So we will take a look at that to make sure and show you that, in fact, hopefully when you pull out of your garage, it won't interfere with any car that might be parked there. And I'm trying to remember, I mean, we have, so let's take a look now. So if you see in that middle picture there, the top middle picture, where that car is parked, let's see if we can put that in reference. It is about where, where we're proposing the new parking, where that.
And that would be the last parking spot?
That would be, yes, that would be the closest to you.
So we can still back out and around and get in and out of our garage?
Yep, so it'll be on the property, but I do understand you still need to be able to swing out of your garage. So as long as you can do it now where that black car is, you should be able to do it in the future.
We can, as long as we don't buy a bigger car.
It's a beauty of living downtown, not needing a bigger car.
That, that there is some confusion now about where cars are parked, but these three parking spaces are entirely on the property. They're entirely on the property that goes with this building. So unless, when you're backing out, you're driving on someone else's property, which you're probably not, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
But I should point out that that's sort of the natural place for the visitor to park their car. And that's, that's occasionally a problem.
For 72 Masonic, for the visitor, 72?
For 70, yeah, for 70 and 76 Masonic.
What do you mean, the visitor parks?
The visitor, you know, tends to park because there's a, it can, because there's asphalt and it's, you know, it's just, it's a path. It's not a public way, although the public uses it.
Oh, you're saying between the buildings?
Yes.
That some people will sometimes pull in and just park there?
Right, it's sort of a natural, you know, one car there and then to park next to it.
So that would become a problem, obviously, with bicycles, if there were people trying to get to the bike rack and there's cars trying to come in and park in that little area.
Do you have places for striping? You have places for striping these?
Yeah, so we're going to do it by material. So we're going to designate the walkway system with a clearly different material than the parking spots. And, and obviously I do think that, you know, we don't want to put a, we don't want to mark the property lines with, you know, typical pool system. So, yes, so striping would absolutely help, especially with parking those cars. We want to make sure that they are not adversely affecting the existing situation. So we would want them on the site.
And the main entry, the walkway is going to be between the two cars on the left, the black car?
Yes, essentially, so in the proposed, yes, that is a good example. It's just that that second car would be turned 90 degrees, so it would sort of parallel park. But yeah, it would, the entrance would be just about where it is now.
And along the side of the building where the proposed bike rack would go, what would be the, the surface there of the ground?
So, right now, we're thinking it's, we're trying to get away from so much paving. It would be good if where the bike rack was, it was at least gravel, but hopefully we have an opportunity to get some real grass there, some actual ground cover there. But again, we won't know until we sort of work very closely with the Arborists. Most importantly is making sure we protect those trees. So that will be sort of the first priority.
Can, can, oh, go ahead, George.
No, I would just, I might say if you wanted to try to do that, I think we could really could downsize the size of that bicycle rack. I'm surprised I'm saying that, but I think we could go to four or something, you know, considering that it is a walkway and all. I don't think there's a lot of bicycle traffic there right now.
Actually, there's, there's quite a lot going to State Street. So I live at 32 Masonic, so there's, there's quite a lot, you know, not going in between those buildings, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, but there is a lot of bicycling and people stopping and using, you know, we use street signs.
Right.
Lock against.
State, State Street has a bicycle rack. So that would be three bicycles per unit here. And perhaps they're allowing for other invitees also to have bicycles. But I think it is a little bit of overkill if you wanted to kind of maximize the impervious ground.
Yeah, right, because there is a public rack in front of Woodstar as well. So that's, yeah, I mean, I would be comfortable if that was something.
I don't, the sense I get though is not, if you're saying to reduce the size of bike rack and in, by doing that you pick up more pervious surface, that's one thing. But I don't get the sense, I could sense that no matter how big the bike rack is, it's going to be impervious in that area, you know what I mean? Whether it's four bikes or 15 bikes.
Does the size of the bike rack affect whether or not you can do a pervious?
No.
Okay.
No, we sort of sized the bike rack to, one, make sure that the tenants were taken care of, and also the public was taken care of, but also to make sure that on that side of the building where the bike rack fit wouldn't be negatively affecting the inhabitants in that building. So we sort of placed it between windows and far enough away that, you know, there's no worry about any, any of the public sort of lurking around windows around the first floor unit.
Just out of curiosity, is there enough daylight to have grass in between?
Well, I mean, I guess we really have to closely study that, but we've seen grass survive in worse situations. So I would, I would say, you know, we go for it.
So can you walk us through the, you know, we read the Arborist report, you know, which referenced some potential disease on some of the trees or some, I guess, root collar disorder? Or, you know, can you just talk us through how what we read may differ from what you hoped to have happen?
Well, so the, so the, he did describe, you know, because of the existing conditions and the limited area in which it could grow, and the fact that so much of that ground is impervious, just in that area in general, not necessarily just the site, that they have developed the root collar disease. So great care would be taken during construction to give these things the most viable chance at life. So he mentions that would be taken afterwards. During construction is one thing. I mean, that, the entire team's going to work together, all of the construction teams are going to be working together to make sure that these trees are well taken care of. After, when construction has been established, as I mentioned before, we want to make sure that we give them more fertilizer. You know, there's nothing that we can do about the root collar now, but we can certainly sort of make the conditions better than they are now. Any nicks or wounds that occur on the tree need to be carefully, it's basically like a wound on a human being. We need to make sure that we sort of take out any ability for dead cells to spread. So it would be cut out and it would be treated. Also, once you've sort of exposed the tree to any sort of construction, it does have the ability to become sicker or to have insects to invade it. So we would want to make sure that sort of the proper treatments were taken care of so that it had a good, healthy immune system, basically. So that, that is the hope, is that we are able to preserve these trees as much as possible, because they are great trees in downtown North Hampton. I mean, it would be, I mean, it's right behind the Sonic and everybody knows that, you know, these trees. So great care will be taken.
And just to clarify or just to ask for clarification, Carolyn, on other types of projects that are larger, you know, we have tree protection measures in terms of ordinances, are we able to condition adherents to those tree protection measures like we usually do, or is that outside of what we?
Well, it's absolutely in your jurisdiction and you, I would, I would recommend that that be done. However, I, particularly with the silver maple, I mean, the Arborist has pretty strong language about the fact that this tree will not likely survive construction no matter what measures are taken. So I, and I think that it would probably be more appropriate to think about the alternatives to that. The other thing I will say is we've seen tree protection measures for trees that are further from construction that in one and two years are starting to decline despite the fact that there was tree protection provided for them. And I think going back and sort of, I think that it's a positive statement that the applicant has said that they would replace the trees, but we do have a replacement requirement of calculation. And so not knowing how many years it would take for a tree to decline after, you know, it could be one, it could be two years, and then tying that back to the permit for replacement requirements that then have three new property owners on the site, I think is, creates a layer of complexity that I think, you know, we should just address upfront. I think there certainly tree protection for the trees that are off-site should be done in accordance with the proposed statements from the Arborist. I think that this would require, because it's such a tight site, it would require and I would recommend you condition that an Arborist be on-site during, not only to oversee the protection measures, but also during the critical times that we can excavate and make sure critical off-site trees that they can be cut appropriately in order to save the tree.
Absolutely, the Arborist would absolutely be part of the project team for sure.
So if I understand that description correctly, we would recommend that the silver maple be removed and payment be made into the tree fund by the applicant. We could also, I don't know if there's rats and out that have trees planted on that site because of the nature of the surface and.
Well, I think, I think I've required them to remove the tree. Right, yeah. I think that you could say that instead of, I mean, the alternative is, if the idea is that they're going to save the tree, then they would have to do extraordinary tree protection, which would probably interfere with the construction of the building, particularly for that large silver maple. So I would say that tree, I would recommend that you assume that tree would come down and that that would be calculated into tree replacement. And to the extent that they could plant one or more trees that are suitable for that kind of environment, and then the remaining to be allocated through the allowance in the ordinance for replacement elsewhere, that that would be appropriate.
So could I suggest that it doesn't have to be either or? We would like not to be required to take down the tree because we have an understanding with the neighbor that we will do everything we can to preserve the tree. We also understand, based on our own history and based on what the Arborist said, there's a very likelihood that the tree won't survive. So if you would like to put in a condition as if the tree did not survive, and it's up to you whether that means planting or paying to a fund or whatever, I think the owner would be willing to do both. Try to preserve the tree and in advance, right now, not wait for the tree to die, to make as a condition whatever you decide you would want if the tree did die, to do them both immediately. So I think you could have your cake and eat it too.
When you're looking at the tree is going to die, it just seems kind of, oh, I like that idea.
Yeah.
And basically you've kind of had your bet. So there's one tree that seems questionable, what about the other two that are borderline on this property or not? Would the same conditions apply to those? Because it sounded like one for the butter that they planted that seems to be thriving, that would indicate if this tree dies, something could be planted in its, be planted in its place instead of just putting money into the fund. But if that, what is now a healthy tree, also, you know, in two years dies. So we have to condition it within a certain amount of time that, whatever, within three years.
Or, yeah, or just focus on the silver maple and say, and condition tree protection for all of the other trees as well. Because it was really mainly that silver maple that was, right?
Right, but it wouldn't be unheard of for the stress of the construction to affect a tree that was just outside the property. That was protected and everything, but the root system was stressed and then two years later.
So the question, would it be, would it be overly burdensome to require the tree replacement, you know, payment for all of the trees on the site upfront?
I'm a little puzzled by the description of the problem by C.L. Frank. He says that it's well within the critical root zone of the tree, but it's not really, is it? Because there's already a foundation there in the basement. So the tree is obviously not growing its roots into the basement, searching for water.
Yeah, right now, right now it is not.
What?
Right now it is not.
Because the foundation's being removed, the foundation's going to change a little bit.
But it's going to be shrunk a little bit, is that right?
Well, the foundation will be moved closer to the tree.
It's not going to get any closer to the tree.
It will. So there's, the five-foot maximum from the property line is the requirement for the setback. So the building actually will be moving a little bit closer.
To the tree.
To, to the tree, so those two trees in the back corner. Good news for the pear tree, questionable news for the other two trees.
And as they do the excavation for the new forms, the new foundation, they're bound to.
And that'll be where the most care is taken. Because, you know, getting the footings and the excavation, you're absolutely right, that is critical.
Mostly we see situations though where excavation is new and is going to encroach on existing root systems. That doesn't seem to be the case here.
You're right, the hole is already there, that is a good point.
But the disruption of excavation, that's the concern, I guess. So, I mean, I asked the question for the applicant, you know, is the applicant amenable to a condition requiring the tree replacement payment for all three of the trees upfront? Is that feasible?
It sounds like two of them, right? I mean, I understand that there's.
I don't know if the other ones are over 20 inches.
Oh, right, so, right, so not the pear tree. So just for the maples, just for the silver maple and the sugar box?
But they would still attempt to preserve?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
But just for the maples?
Right, so, and in fact, I mean, Arborist doesn't seem, I mean, Arborist is, is, seems.
Right, so, in fact, I mean, Arborist doesn't seem, I mean, Arborist is, seems to be most concerned about the largest tree. The other maple tree and the pear tree don't seem to be as much in jeopardy in seeing like they may actually survive. And we don't have this understanding with the other neighbors, because we feel like we'll be able to keep them. So, we're hoping that in fact, if you're gonna require as a condition that something be done in advance of the death of the trees, that we limit it to the larger one. You know, we hear a lot about, you know, that tree on the corner of South Street in Main by Academy of Music. We hear that a lot, where every precaution is taken to save that tree, to work around, to protect it, and it's dying. And it's gonna, it's gonna be dead within a couple of years. And so, it just seems like every effort should be made to, which the applicant seems willing to do, but I don't know about a payment upfront. I don't know that that's, that seems unnecessarily burdensome that they're gonna try to save the trees upfront. But we should condition it that within three years of over stress is shown, or the tree's failing, then the applicant will be willing at that time to come back and say, oh, we gave it a good faith effort, it's not working, we'll...
We're absolutely made of a three-year, a three-year time line.
Yes, go ahead.
So, I'd like to ask, did the developer or Berkshire Design meet with the butters in the cafe that has the outdoor cafe there?
Yeah, so indeed, the prospective buyers, yes, they absolutely did, as recently as today. They've been having a conversation about the tree and trying to save it, and then today it was sort of, they came to an agreement that every precaution would be taken to save the tree, and that as a last resort, if in fact it did show signs down the road that the tree was declining, that they would, the prospective buyers would replace that tree.
How about the fences along those two...
Sorry, the fences?
Are the fences, do they belong to the applicant, or to the other butters?
So, the fence is pretty much...
What are the plans for those?
Oh, bench?
No, fence.
Fence, okay. So, the fence right now is on the property line, and it's sadly nailed into the tree. So, yes, so that's another issue we're gonna have to work with the Arborist on, to make sure that those wounds, because obviously during construction, you know, the fence may be affected. And so, we wanna make sure that what goes up is nice and attractive, and we wanna make sure that it's not adversely affecting the tree. So, but yes, so the plans for the fence, right now, it will stay, but it needs to be addressed during construction.
That fence is gonna stay. How about the fence on the, against the parking lot in the rear of the building? Does that belong to the developer, or...
Oh, so I don't actually know legally who owns the fence. Do we know legally?
It's behind the iron, I...
So, it would technically not, it is not our property. So, again, we'd have to make sure that the fence at least stayed in the condition in which it's under, if not a newer updated fence, but...
Are there comments from DPW?
There were comments about utility connections that you, that are pretty standard, that I don't think you need to incorporate. Then they had the questions about the drainage, which I think you clarified, and...
What was that about the sewer connection?
Just that they're, they have to do, they have to have different meters for all three units. They have to do water and sewer connections out to the Sonic Street, in accordance to the DPW requirements.
Because the existing right now, the 72, not 72, yeah, 72 Masonic, the sewer from there joins our sewer, and I think our sewer line runs under your property. It's very old infrastructure. That would be a disaster.
Yeah, so we are gonna trace it before anything's done. We're gonna trace it and make sure, so that we know ahead of time exactly what's, you know, as much as we can plan for, what's underneath that pavement, we'll try to. Yeah, we don't want to affect your sewer.
That would make very...
Yeah, that would be good neighbors.
Make the good neighbors.
Are they all overhead electrical lines in that neighborhood, or are they underground?
Overhead, most part.
Actually, overhead, such as underground.
Ours are straight ground, ours are... So, there was just a project to underground the lines on the Sonic Street. And National Grid did the trenching a couple of months ago, and it's not clear. They leave the physical lines up, and they just turn them off, so they keep them for like a few minutes. But it's not clear, it's not clear to me if that would be allowed to be in the... You know, front of Woodstar in front of my building, it's all underground.
So, if they're coming off State Tree, I don't know, is there an option for this project to have underground utility lines rather than overhead?
So, I guess it would, ideally, right, I mean, I guess everybody likes underground. So, I guess it would only make sense as far as if, if that area needed to be opened up. We don't want to adversely affect, or start digging up sort of that entire alleyway. But if it needed to be dug up for some other, for some reason, say, you know, the sewer we needed to address, then we could definitely look at that and try and incorporate it. But for right now, there aren't any other plans to change it from overhead to underground.
It's currently overhead.
Yeah.
And is, does gas service the building, or is it a...
There is a gas line already to the building, yes.
The only other comments DPW had were just they wanted revised plans showing updated connections, corrected references to the street and alley names, and where the existing utilities are in the passageway prior to construction.
Tell me more about correct labeling of alleys and walkways.
Uh, but, so, I guess it's labeled as Button Alley, which DPW was indicating that's not the appropriate name for it. So, just for clarification's sake, so there's not confusion with the other button.
Can we rename it Diesel and Avenue, or...
Private way, so you don't have jurisdiction on it.
It's too tense.
They can rename it.
And then, just for clarification, this, it will be going to the Central Business Architecture Committee for the exterior design elements and compliance with the requirements for downtown design. It was scheduled earlier this week, but because of quorum issues, they couldn't meet, so it'll be next week.
But we don't need to condition our approval on their approval?
No, totally separate permitting process.
There's nothing, there's nothing that they would require of a change that would kind of undermine anything that we've already talked about? So, they're separate...
Right, they wouldn't be looking at the site.
Or the site or anything.
So, my only input to them would be, as we look at that exterior wall that faces the Cooper's Lot, which is very visible because of that wide open spot, the window alignment is rather kind of standard and blah. And right now, the window alignment is very different and kind of architecturally unique.
One thing, I think that this is correct, that CBAC is concerned with what you can see from the public way. So, if it's not some, if it's only a view that you could see from a private State Tree lot, if you could see it from the center, then maybe they, you know, but I think they would wanna check and see, they don't have jurisdiction over what can't be visible from the public way.
The standards also do address window patterning and rhythm, so they'll be looking at that.
Other questions or comments from the board?
A quick review of all of our conditions. We do have conditions that lights should be no cooler than 3,000 K. Prior to issuance of building permit, revised plans shall be submitted to office of planning sustainability, including the dumpster enclosure details, planting plan, all inclusive lighting plan. We would like to condition the tree protection measures taken for all of the trees in accordance with Arborist report. And then Arborist be onsite to observe the tree protection in the critical times like excavation. We'd condition that tree replacement, payment be made if, within three years, any of those large maple trees that are referenced in the Arborist report do not survive.
Excuse me, is it payment, or is it replacement, or...
I think we say, I think we'd say replacement, because then...
In accordance with the ordinance, because that allows for either planting or payment. So, replacement in accordance with city ordinance, and then DPW comments as provided.
Yeah, there's one other one that they did ask for a condition that a copy of the book and page of the condominium documents be submitted to DPW, and that's more about making sure they understand how the water and sewer shared access easements will be addressed within the building, so...
So, I think I read that these are gonna be three apartments, but are they really gonna be three condos? There's gonna be some kind of associations, and then...
Yeah, there would be an association that governs.
Who will then be responsible for things like maintenance and the dumpster, and... So, I'm wondering how snow removal is managed now in that type of little neighborhood? Look at that at all for this unit?
I don't think it matters whether it's condominium or...
I mean, right now, typically, if, you know, anybody who has a building downtown, it's all removal, it's rarely just bowing, and so, the, you know, the, any association would know that that would have to be part of their maintenance plan. You know, there would be space for any, it doesn't look like on this site there's any space for snow storage anyway, unless everyone agrees to give up their parking spaces, which probably wouldn't happen.
It was case by file.
What's that?
It was case by file.
Precisely.
Just leave it there.
Just leave it. But yeah, I don't think that we can condition anything about, about that.
Did you address the fact that the parking places would be clearly marked?
Yes, we asked about striping and delineation of the spaces. Anything else?
Move to close for the comment.
Second, second in favor. Is there another motion? Sorry.
George is third. So, I'll move to approve the site plan for construction of a three-story residential building at 72 Masonic Street, North Hampton, MAP ID 31D dash 124, with the conditions as previously mentioned in our discussion, which, I don't know if we need to specify them at this point.
So, you read them all out?
So, if you're fine with that, I think we're all good.
And the applicant asserted all the conditions also, you know, what they're responsible for.
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
Mark, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have additional business, so if you'd like to continue talking, we ask that you just sit outside. 7:30, this is... We have our 7:30 here in zoning ordinance amendment, section 350 dash 2.1, modification to the... Would you like me to read it? Chris is like, I'm not looking at it. The current definition is, any structure which is incidental and subordinate to the principal structure, shall not obtain, shall not obtain, shall not obtain any of the recommendations listed in the... Accessory structures shall exceed 40% of the gross floor area of the principal structure. Structures shall not contain, currently, any of the... All of these are recommendations to... Yeah, is there any more commentants? What is the rationale on that? What is sparking this?
This, the building commissioner recommended this slight clarification. So, what's happening is, I guess, there have been instances where there's been applications for garages or studio workspaces, which we allow. And there's sort of a creep in those spaces of what's added over time, or maybe even after a permit pull. And typically, you know, there may be a charcoal kitchen, but there's a efficiency kitchen. And so, I think the building commissioner feels like it is simpler and clearer to also say, well, you know, if you're adding a shower, there's no real need to have a shower and a workspace, you can have a sink and a toilet, but this is just another element to, sort of, that might signify that this is actually becoming a residential...
Doesn't need a toilet.
So, you could still have a toilet and not be in violation of this? Right, yeah, toilet and sink.
I mean, I could live in a structure that only had a toilet, and I'm like, nothing like that. That's interesting.
No, 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 you can't.
No, no, I mean, I'm saying like, I could, like...
You better not.
So, I know, I know, it's just not interesting that you use a toilet today?
I know.
No, I mean, I would just go to the why, but I'm just saying, like, a person, it's interesting, because, yeah, when I saw that we're bathing, I assumed that meant anything that's like in a bathroom. Like, I just interpreted that as like a shower, toilet, or a sink. No, it's just like...
What?
Fearless leader.
I'm just saying, I'm just trying to clarify. Okay, so bathing just means a shower, okay, or a bathroom. Well, what would the technical word be if we wanted it to include a toilet?
Nobody does, it says shall not include, we do allow.
Yeah, I'm saying, but if we didn't want to, just like hypothetically, we want one in a water closet.
I don't know.
Is there a comment in the series, or is there a motion?
I have a motion to accept the...
Or recommend, you're gonna be recommending to City Council.
I have a motion to rec, to...
So, you wanna close the hearing?
I wanna close the hearing.
Is there a scientific...
No.
No, I have a few questions first, if that all right. So, do you read that, because we don't have a lot of...
Yeah, yeah, any structure which, so, an accessory structure is, any structure which is incidental and subordinate to the principal structure, but which is located on the same lot as the principal structure. Accessory structure shall not exceed 40% of the gross floor area of the principal structure, and shall not contain bathing, sleeping, or kitchen facilities.
Right now, it just says shall not contain sleeping...
The word bathing is what's being recommended to be added.
So, a kitchen facility allows for a sewer's line, a drain line of some sort, right?
And so, it's a toilet, you can have a toilet and a sink in a garage, or a workshop space, if it's an accessory structure to your house. Right. Unless it meets the setback, meaning you've met all the other criteria for living. But the issue is someone puts a garage in, and you can be four feet to the property line for a garage, then they wanna convert it to a workspace, and then there's a futon in there, and then there's a microwave and a toaster oven, and then, oh, let's add a shower, and it's not a big deal.
Right, and you have Airbnb, S.W.A., not a regular...
And then you're right up on the property line, so you're not meeting the setbacks or the other criteria for a living unit.
Right.
Feel good?
Is bathing, is there another word that more easily encompasses shower?
I don't know, is there?
You guys are reading way too quickly.
And don't forget, this is not taking the interpretive allowances away from the building commissioner. So, if someone says, what's your definition of bathing? The building commissioner said, that bathtub is bathing, this is not allowed. So, it's still, there's still interpretation...
Shower is bathing.
Right.
Question, just because we're still talking about this. So, if your accessory structure, your garage is in the middle of your lot, and it's not four feet away from property, meets all setbacks, is this still, this will allow you to...
Well...
Turn, turn, get the foot for bathing, or put in a shower?
No, because then you would become an accessory dwelling unit. And then you get defined as...
Oh, they're like, yes, or whatever, right, okay, that makes sense. Now, is there a motion?
I have a motion to close.
Do you mean second? All those in...
Do you know anybody who wants to speak to this?
Is there anyone from the public? All those in favor? Is there another motion to recommend adoption of this, or sending it to City Council Ordinance Committee? Recommend to the City Council adopt?
I recommend, I'd make a motion to recommend City Council adopt this motion.
Is there a second? You're any seconds? Those in favor? Anyone opposed?
No.
George, oh, you're in favor.
I just think I have to raise my hand, I'm in favor.
Great, thank you. Do we stay open under the resilience plan, or are we...
Well, you're, no, you're still in your regular meeting. You closed all the public hearing, so I just...
I was hoping you'd have printouts.
Hey, yeah, I have a lot of paper. It is separate, but we're on our resilience team, which tells like, you know, five trees.
One, two, three, one, two, three, two, three. So, I start?
Yes.
if you wanted to sort of treat it as a whole instead of a subcommittee. So our plans come through regularly and sort of tell you what we're working on and then, you know, sort of give you an opportunity for for comments as we go along. So let me go through three documents, and this, none of this will be long, maybe it will be long, it's up to you. I won't be long. How much do you want to talk about?
I'll put a timer on you.
Okay.
Because we also, so just to kind of clarify, so Carolyn, you send us an attachment with this matrix, the entire matrix with this
No, one of all the colors is what I sent you.
Okay.
That's where you spend most of, that's what
I read it on my phone and I'm now, but I see it in hard copy and I can't believe I did that much scrolling.
You have really good eyes if you could do that.
I mean, I guess, yeah, so then, right, okay, so this is what we received.
Yeah, right, right. So let's do that one last, and we'll sort of tell you what everything else is so you know what it is. This first one's really more for discussion. So you all, or in most cases your predecessors, adopted the Sustainable North Hampton Plan 11 years ago. And we're get to revising it, I don't know, eight months from now or a year from now or something like that, after we clean up everything else. As part of this process though, we sort of want to look back and say, how does that really move the dial? What's changed as a result of the plan? The plan has literally hundreds of recommendations. We didn't go through all the recommendations. All we really looked at is the big picture is the goals. So I want to just walk you through to make sure everyone's sort of in the same page, you know, what we're doing and working on, is this five-page, eight and a half by 11 document, and it's basically one page per section of goals. So the first one is about the land use goals, and the left side is the goals from the plan, and the right side is the stuff that we're working on. So I just want to walk you through that very quickly, just sort of get you, this is sort of a, to get you to think about what are we doing and not doing in the plan. So, you know, the first one was make land use changes in accordance with the land use map. That's probably the single item in the sustainable plan that's absorbed the most amount of your time. So, you know, it's really basically a nine-year process from start to finish to do major resumings in URB and URC, to less extent, office industrial in downtown. And it remains, you know, one of the biggest effects we've had in terms of changing where housing starts are happening, so not in suburban areas, more than walking distance to downtown. But it also remains controversial. You all heard the Olive and South Street project, that wouldn't have been cost one of the old or, it would have been a smaller project in the old zoning and the media buzzes and so it will be for joy for that. So some of the ones, so some of the very concrete, like the open, like that, that thing, and then some are more nebulous, you know, high-quality built environment downtown building centers. But that's still missed, that along with recommendation, the transportation plan is, you know, we've just kicked off, we've just hired a tool design to redesign Main Street, the street, and that's going to be a $10 million construction project. It comes out of this, it comes out of transportation pieces, but it's all about sort of how you make downtown more vibrant. All the work on the sidewalks we've done downtown 35 years ago, and they're tired. And so that's the sort of thing that comes out of distinction between rural areas and residential, and any sound interrupts we go along, so I don't want to just be talking to you, but maintain distinctions between rural and urban areas. We've done that somewhat with the zoning and a lot more with our open space acquisitions. We've been buying about three-quarters of percent of open space every single year for 25 years, so it adds up, and a lot of that is backland, but a lot of that's strategic. It's sort of, you know, so at the corner where Ryan Road hits Sylvester Road, we have been building a large conservation area, and that's really sort of the boundary. So we, you know, we bought this land, we sold a building lot for four townhouses with sewer line in it, because we said basically when the sewer line is, that makes sense for more development. When the sewer line ends, it doesn't make sense until we buy another land.
That's right, at Willards there, the
That's right, across the street from Willards.
Our new marijuana plant he has.
That's right, right, which will also be another 140 acres of open space for that to buy. Preserve and encourage agriculture. Again, most of that's on the open space side that you have less involved with, but it's in the zoning side as well. You know, we're one of the few communities who regulates the 500-year floodplain instead of the 100-year floodplain, to say clearly, you know, we don't want development in the meadows. So, so that's the first one. The second page, I'm just going to skip this one, the second one's about energy, environment, and climate protection, and that is basically the subject of the Resiliency Regeneration Plan. So we're going to talk about this in more detail, but you know, the mayor's made the commitment that we want to be a carbon-neutral city by 2050, and so we have a lot of things going on that move us towards that. Somewhere in a leadership position, we just got a $75,000 federal grants, or nationwide grant, not from the federal government, but $75,000 is to look at some kind of community choice aggregation 3.0. There's lots of sort of communities who are at the basic level and communities who are at intermediate level, and very few going as far as, you know, so we want to apply it. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, we'll come back later, but just think of this as something that interconnects. So if we want to get to carbon neutrality by 2050, that's going to mean everything from more renewable, more energy-efficient buildings, more bypassed, you know, so it's a crosscutting theme that you're seeing. Open space, again, I'm not going to go into as much detail because this is going to affect you all less. You did approve the new open space recreation plan. I think one or two of you may be on our mailing list for, we're having a meeting, it's Tuesday night, to talk about our North Hampton One Plan, a trail that goes around the entire city, and so you see a lot of these things. The main area where it comes before the board is when you get cluster subdivisions, when we talk about zoning, because zoning reinforces the acquisitions that we did. Economic development, which probably affects you least of all, but still it's one of the things that cuts through everything, so we think about, you know, again, you supported a lot of zoning changes in recent years to move some of the permitting requirements for commercial areas from special permits, which scares the developers, to site plan approval to give them more assurance, and that's part of, you know, sort of attracting economic development. Obviously, we're very successful on Pleasant Street, and you guys are involved in some of the terms that kind of mean. Arts and culture, mostly this is other departments and nonprofits within North Hampton, but even there we do, we do some things, you know, we put our gateway signs on Pleasant Street. Carolyn's pushing us to get, you know, art in the middle of roundabouts, and sort of gateways to downtown, so
I'm going to do it as like a guerrilla project. Don't end up, I'm free to do it. Just like, go. I already have sketches.
And you know, sooner you have four roundabouts, so we're hoping to, it's not just the two we have, but the two that are
Where are the others?
Exit 19 is a good, it's supposed to be advertised fairly soon.
That's really
They've been talking about that for like 100 years.
The Hatfield Street, like the Hatfield and
Hatfield Street is supposed to be advertised next in July with 2020 construction.
Yeah.
So that's the fourth one, but exit 19, which would be the monster one by the Coolidge Bridge
How long does that take?
MassDOT typically gives people two years and maybe even longer for punch, or definitely longer for punchless items. Some items go faster. Con Street was basically one year of construction, and I don't know if MassDOT's
So where is that roundabout online?
Formed apart at the Coolidge, with Coolidge Bridge, exit 19, Damon Road, Bridge Street, it's going to be a roundabout. It will be our first and probably only two-lane roundabout. So it's a bigger piece, and we'll have what's called a flyway, so if you're coming off exit 19, going to Amherst, you would actually go into a roundabout.
Right, you're just
You're
It's like the V bridge, like going around.
Isn't there supposed to be an on-ramp to 91?
So the on-ramp that exists there already, so the on-ramp northbound is not, that's, that was going to have too many, too much takings, was too controversial, so that's not going to happen. The on-ramp southbound is going to go from one lane to two lanes, so there'd be, when you're coming down Bridge, Bridge Street, as soon as you come to the roundabout, you have three lanes to enter, one to go downtown and two to get on the interstate. And that means you can meteor traffic a lot faster.
They can expand the bridge?
Not in a This all came out of, you know, Santa Rosenberg got money to look at a new bridge crossing study, and the cost was in hundreds of millions of dollars, no one went to it, so that's how they freed up money for sort of these
Do you think this roundabout's going to make that travel over the bridge quicker because there's no light?
It would stop the metering that happens at the signal. Obviously, the bridge is same-matic fast they had before, but there's a lot of wasted time in the signal, so in a roundabout, you sort of have near constant movement, so it can carry more cars through.
More cars, slower, you don't have the backlot that you
Yeah, I mean, even though since you wait that light and the bridge going towards Amherst is empty, so that, that we're using our capacity more completely.
But when I make a laptop blinking, I need that light so I can make
That's right.
This is going to be horrible. Nobody gets it.
We'll put a traffic light
I'll keep going.
The art installation on the roundabout, just make that happen. I haven't talked about that, it's
I consider these victimless crimes, so
I agree, it's nice coming into North Hampton, oh, that's the next roundabout, and then
Weeds.
I also got to put my lawn dog
Yes, it's not attractive plantings, it's neat
I don't know why they didn't just put like a mixed flower thing in there, like, you know, the mixed, they could have just thrown that in there.
I'm going to do sculpture art.
Oh, whatever.
But Stag Dumpy, put Stag Dumpy back there.
Every time you drive
Yeah, I loved it.
You did, really?
You know where he's at now, is a, we're getting off track, Covington, what's that Cov, it's on, Covington, yeah, the store, yeah, it's right outside that.
Really? He's making the rounds charging.
Yeah.
So we use this example, how we're planning help, so exit 19, we actually had very little to do with, and we testified we were involved, it was mostly MassDOT project. But the Con's Pleasant Street one, you know, we began that by doing a feasibility study of look in the intersection, should it be a signal or should it be a roundabout, it was a less than $10,000 study, and then we went to MassDOT, because usually cities design intersections. We went to MassDOT and said, we'll take over Pleasant Street from you, but only if you design the roundabout and build the roundabout. So we're taking over, we've taken over Pleasant Street, that's why we're able to do all the work on Pleasant Street, and we've just taken over the rest of Pleasant Street, so we're now looking at that. But that all began from this, you know, five or $10,000 study that began. So a lot of things in here are small, but sort of, you know, hopefully
So what was a highway up to the roundabout is now the city's street?
Right, so the flight-controlled dike is the border.
Yep, okay.
So we got the sidewalks, the flight-controlled dike, we got the roundabout, so yes, that's all ours. And we got the park from Hockaman two years ago, we just got the park from Holyoke to Hockaman, we just got the park from Hockaman to the interstate last year, so now we're looking, we had bike lanes, we had a row of parking.
Can we get rid of that DPW set right up there?
That's used, the MassDOT.
The MassDOT.
That's what they used to do with their plow now.
That's on the other side of the dike.
The other side.
Yeah.
The other side.
No, probably not.
That's why we need the beacon and the heart of the
So heritage resources, again, send us more through both the Conservation Commission for landscapes and Historical Commission for historical character. But do you get involved, someone in the whole combination about looking at design for downtown, designing Florence, we're sort of looking at how do we protect historic character but have a more streamlined permitting process? And so the combination we've had about form-based code downtown, maybe the part of downtown remains at central business architecture reviews, but maybe places like Pleasant Street, which isn't really historic in character, that that could be done through the zoning process if I come back. Housing, obviously, there's been a lot of levels, but affordable housing's been more investment, but a lot of regulatory stuff, and so a lot of the successes we've had initially before, but URB and URC came out of this real effort. The other thing that's sustained on our Hampton Plan, it's been 11 years, so we forget this, but we, until 11 years ago, we always had this tension, we want affordable housing. One philosophy was we want it scattered throughout the neighborhoods, we don't have rich neighborhoods and poor neighborhoods, if there's some, you know, integration, and the others we wanted sustainable areas where there's buses and people can walk. And coming out of the consensus we've built for Sustainable Hampton, we said, well, what we really want to do is most affordable housing is going to be rental, because that's what the federal government's been in the business of, so the tax credit program is rental, and all that stuff should all be downtown, in Florence to a literal extent, and at the state hospital. And the first-time homebuyers, which aren't just not a lot of those going on, and mostly created by the city, creating lots, those are the ones that should be scattered throughout the city. So we create a few lots every year, so we get the habitat, again, it doesn't add up to much in terms of units, but it's something, but that, again, that came out of that Sustainable North Hampton Plan.
You know, I don't know if this is possible, but this might be way, way off topic, but one of the things that I'd love to see in terms of economic development in the city is more, more direction for sort of smaller developers like myself to take advantage of, of sort of low-income, low-income housing development. Because one of the things that's just, I mean, I just spent $150,000 of my own money redoing a property, and I guarantee you, it's not going to be low, low income, because it's my own money. You know, it's not like the projects that are going down, down, and, you know, one of the problems, I'm sort of looking at this relative to Holyoke right now, and sort of expanding into neighborhoods where I might be able to do this, but the, the, there's so much, like, you need to, before you can even see if you are interested in this thing, you need to be able to afford $150,000 lawyer to see if you can qualify. And so if the city really wants to bring low-income, or I don't know, whatever, affordable, affordable housing, you know, there's a lot of people like myself who are looking at buying duplex or triplex or a single-family home and would love the opportunity to rent it to someone at not top dollar if, if there was a method of figuring out how to take advantage.
So something that's like not section eight, but like lower than housing tax credits for small-scale
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's just
Under 20 units or something.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, the, the great projects that are happening downtown are great, but, you know
Really big.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and one thing unfortunately, and it's a good point, yes, we should, we should think about that and figure out how to do it. The federal government has narrowed down the focus in tax credit financing is the biggest thing, and those are just hard to deal with after a big project. So it is, it's become the realm of beacon group and nonprofits and big things, but yeah, there's certainly something, you know, CBA is eligible for, and CBPG is eligible for smaller developers, so we should find out what to spread it. Right. Infrastructure, again, you know, I've been talking, it seems like I used to be a planner and now I'm a project person building things, and that sort of comes out of what are the things we're trying to do, but it's really, we've realized it's the way we, I think I, maybe I was just slow at realizing this, but I, we've come to appreciate how much infrastructure affects everything else, and so that's in some ways why we got in that business. So you know, with this somewhat odd divide in North Hampton, it seems to work really well. The projects being done with city money or chapter 90 money are done by DPW, projects done with grants, some of the non-traditional things are usually done by a planning office, and so we have a chance to, you know, to make some changes as a result of those things. You know, we just spent $2 million to move 500 feet of storm sewer on Pleasant Street to allow the lumberyard to happen, but also replace 160-year-old pipe, and that comes out of these things. So there'd be a lot of these things, you know, we're beginning, as we think about the next plan, there's sort of hints of where we go. You know, we write now, every time a capital project's proposed for the mayor, there has to be an assessment, what are the future costs of carrying this, this project, does it save the city money by reducing, you know, if you pave a roundabout, it may be ugly, but it saves the city money for maintenance. If you have nice grass or that, you know, we have to have assessment. We haven't done that so far, for example, for greenhouse gas emissions and for carbon neutrality. And so some of the things that might come is how do we look at these projects going forward? You know, we have this $40,000 pilot project right now to look at stormwater, and can we do more green infrastructure, because we could never replace all the pipes, it's literally billions of dollars to replace all our pipes, and so, are there other ways in some places to cut back? emissions and for carbon neutrality. And so some of the things that might come is how do we look at these projects going forward? You know, we have this $40,000 pilot project right now to look at stormwater, and can we do more green infrastructure? Because we could never replace all the pipes. It's literally billions of dollars to replace all our pipes. So, I don't know the ways in some places to cut back. Transportation, you guys have been very involved with this, especially because last year you did the walk bike plan. So no real surprises. I think it's the area that I'm most proud of some of our successes. We've had real mode shift in increasing people bicycling. And I have to say that the only numbers we really have are journey to work. So the journey to work by bicycle has gone up significantly. Unfortunately, most of the extra bicycle trips have come from people walking. We've been less successful getting people to bicycle walk instead of drive. We just shifted, but at least we're giving people options that are out there. We don't have data yet because of value bike sharing, and we don't have data for, you know, the journey to work is the trip that a car is most desirable, right? Most people commute some distance to work, and then they have to go in all sorts of weather and dress well, as opposed to going shopping or walking your dog, but those things work. So we think we've had more effect in areas. We don't really know. But we certainly, I have to say, for a city of 30,000 people in a region of that center of 50,000, we get far more than our fair share, don't sound embarrassed, but we get far more than our fair share of federal and state dollars. So we're gonna be doing a good job at least in that sense. So, again, I'm not gonna go over this. Governance and fiscal stability, yeah, this is probably less your part. So this is partially, partially, we're in good economic times. We know bad times come, so I'm not trying to say it's not about that. And the voters' pass been override recently, but the city's bond rating has been upgraded recently, so we're doing very well in the normal measure. But it still affects some things. We had, I was on a panel with bond rating agencies. And one of the questions was, does sustainability help bond ratings? And basically, the intangible, I've got the number, that's like 40% of bond ratings are intangibles. And the fact that you're sustainable and aren't using coal, they don't really care about. That doesn't affect your bond rating. But the fact that, you know, every file my office has, or almost every file my office has, is backed up on the web, and if City Hall burns down, all the files are safe. That's the kind of stuff that bond rating agencies care about. That, you know, are you ready for them? So we've done a good job of that. I think our biggest threat, which we're trying to deal with, is our dikes are not certified by FEMA as working. The floodplain maps are in a process of being revised for the first time in 40 years. It's a five-year process, we're just starting. But if we don't get the flood-controlled dike certified, then they're not gonna count for floodplain maps. And that means the floodplain will be right at the bottom of the hill, which would make people's insurance rates go to the roof, and no one's ever gonna build a new building on Pleasant Street if that happens. So that becomes a big thing we have to deal with. But at least, you know, we have a few years, we're being able to plan for it. So it's that kind of thing we're trying to focus on long-term. The city's stormwater utility has made up for, they basically had deferred maintenance going back to Prop 2.5 for the dikes and stormwater system. So we have huge amount of deferred maintenance, but for the first time, we're catching up, however slowly, if that's what comes out of these things. You can get some, from a climate change standpoint, stormwater is our biggest thing. So that's a very rare thing. Education, again, this is more school department and planning, it doesn't have that much to do with this area. But we're just trying to have those conversations going. We've done some things, you know, the library's interested in what happens when the storm comes, what's the role of the library? Because they know everybody. So there's still some integrated education system. Social equity, I think this is something that Northampton's never doing as much as we'd like, but probably more than most cities. Certainly, this has to do with affordable housing. We've had some success, although not nearly as much as I'd like, at getting underrepresented populations on our boards. We've done some focus groups, and we've been successful at getting underrepresented populations on that. So we had a bunch of focus groups during the transportation plan, for example, and during our recent health plan, less so on other boards. But again, those things are in. So we now, every time we buy open space or recreation areas, one of the assessments we do is who's being served and who isn't being served. So River Run's right next to some conservation area, but they really couldn't get there. And so we're trying to buy community gardens right next to River Run, to make them less. So we, and we're trying to, we will be getting the sidewalks as well.
Wait, can I back up a second?
Yeah.
Just one question. It's true that Northampton residents are less than half the students in the, in the school?
I said, oh, about 40%.
Oh, in Smithville?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
In the high schools, all of Northampton, two, three.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Smithville. Yeah. And it does really hurt us. It's not a regional school, so we're 100% responsible for capital costs. So the school's tuitioning in, they pay, you know, more for a vocational school than academic school, but they don't cover any of the academic. And we've done some, you know, one of the things that my office did is we sold a lease for a cell tower at the VA property that Smithville owns, that just brings them in $24,000 every year. So we've done some things, but again, for the most part, my office is involved. So any, first of all, is this a useful way to, I'm trying to think, you don't wanna go through 300 actions, but is this a useful way to do this?
Yeah.
Were there, were there kind of specific measures, Wayne, in sustainability? Like currently, we have 10 of these, and we wanted to get to 30 of these? Or were they?
Right. So that, what, that was the weakness of original sustainability plan. Our consultant, I think I went to a bar and brainstormed, because they had some great metrics, and the other areas they just skipped. It seemed to be totally random, like, oh, we could measure this. So, so we could, and for the most part, they're not. And that, so that's why we did STAR, because STAR became our metrics. So STAR was everything about what percentage of people live within walking distance of urban areas, what's our walk score, what's this AARP livability index. And so it used a lot of those things. And that's, we could go over that sometime if you want with STAR, but it's much more detailed.
So if, I mean, some of these things, as I look through them, you, you get an A+, a B+ for all the work you've done. Are there any, do we have any way of saying that we're really falling down in this area?
Yeah, yeah. So let me, at some point, next time we come, let me do a similar report card to this using the STAR program.
Okay.
That might be useful, especially if that runs out this year, we're about to renew it. But I would say of, just a quick sense of STAR, the area we had the lowest score was social equity, which we hung our heads down. And it turned out, we started calling calls from other communities around the country, who said, yeah, but we're even lower. So, so it turned out we were doing better than a lot of communities were at. So I can go through all those things. I mean, not incredible detail, but.
Yeah, get one of those interns to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's the point. So when we redo the plan, it'll be more focused, it'll be translating all of, all of the goals into that matrix of STAR, so it'll be easier to assess, or it'll be easier to see what the assessment is and how we're doing.
And one of the products of this resiliency plan is the so-called community dashboard. So the issue is, you know, if we have 300 measures, my eyes glaze over, much less the public. So we could try to do a couple pages of basically infographics online, a dashboard, to try and tell some of that story. They haven't started it yet, so I don't know what it's gonna look like. But, yeah, we're trying to bring that stuff more alive.
Wayne, can I ask another question, which, Mayor, may not be germane. The single most valuable, largest conspicuous property in the city that's ever used is next to the transfer station, the state property. What's the status of that? Can that ever?
So it has two challenges, you know. One is, most, half of its wetlands, so it's not nearly as valuable as it looks, and has hazardous waste. So they offered it to Mayor Higgins a few years ago, so we're give it to you if you take over the liability. Didn't go anywhere. David Narkwitz came in and he said, this is unquantified. We can't, we can't give you a blank check. We have no idea what the cost was. So that went on hold. Mast dot has finally started the process of cleaning it up. So once it's cleaned up, it's gonna go back on, it's gonna be available. DPW has some interest in it to move their transfer station out of their yard. So DPW is gonna sell the old water department property and then consolidate, and that makes it very tight, so they'd like to buy that area for recycling center. But always it goes in the market. But again, it's not that big. The, the building itself, basically wetlands comes right up to the building. So you have the front parking lot in front of the building and the foot in the building.
Really? Okay, so.
Yeah, it's not like.
Useful aside.
No, I mean, it's a nice property, but it's funny, I thought you were gonna ask me about the old Honda site, because that's the biggest loss.
Right, right.
What's that?
The Honda site on King Street.
The old Honda. Yeah. And it has been for a decade now, right?
Yeah. How about the dog park?
Private dog park or a city dog park?
Good.
Or the state hospital? There's three.
The state hospital.
Okay, Don't Call Dog.
I mean, it's what attracted me to the city.
Yeah.
I mean, it's what attracts 90% of people to the city.
The transfer station.
The dog park.
Oh, the dog park.
Yeah.
The state hospital.
What's the dog?
The dog park.
Soon you'll have a different dog park on Glendale Road.
Yeah, the dog, the dog park were, it's the most used, most used place in the city. And it's, I think, I got, what always drove me insane about, about that discussion that was, that was had, was that the focus stopped, should have been, and I still think the city is losing, losing, is that we should say, the vocational school should create the best dog park running path in the, in the country, and that should be its vocational goal. And it just drove me insane that somehow that was not something that, that the city and Smithville could not come to an agreement about doing.
So just to background, there was a 15-year public debate.
Yeah.
That called in 1984 with legislation that preserved his ag land with universal support. And it is very heavily with state policy, not his ag land. We have made, so that's one of the issues, that a dog park can exist as long as it's totally consistent. It may be, I mean, you could probably do that if you stop dogs from running through the cornfield. But it has to be agriculture for us, unless we went back to legislature and had it, had to change.
But that's what I'm saying. It's, I guess I felt like that, that there was room, instead of just saying, oh, well, it can only be one or the other, you know, we have a vocational school here, where the focus was, I mean, as I could see it, was a sort of 19th century notion of what agriculture was. And it had nothing to do with the fact we had this beautiful land, you had all these people using.
Yeah.
And I was, just, it struck me as very thoughtless that no one could come up with a solution that allowed all these people to use this land without animosity, but at the same time allowing adults to ride on some tractors to cut the useless amount of corn. So.
So the, so the current strategy.
Those students are adults.
There are never a Smithville students on that, on those, on those.
So the current strategy has sort of been a three-part strategy. It's, that property has been loved to death, you know, so damage to crops, damage to Mill River. So we hope, and it's totally private for the dog park that you guys approved in Glendale Road, we hope that's successful and pulls away some of the pressure on both the state hospital dog park and conservation areas. I'm still interested in recreation, so I'm thinking someday creating a more urban-type dog park, the sort of, the one acre in offense that some people want, you know, particularly within walking distance of downtown. And then my hope is that reduces enough pressure in the state hospital that the interest of Department of Agriculture in not land dogs goes away. Because then, instead of being overwhelmed with dogs, it's one of three options where people can go.
I, I guess I, I disagree. I, I mean.
Can we take this offline? I'm not even like a dog person, like I have just like literally no dog in the fight.
I actually think, I mean, again, I go back to, this is, it's the most waft, like exercise-used place in the city.
No, I would.
I don't say that's true.
Have you seen the, the number of cars?
The bike path?
The number of cars that are parked there.
Yeah, but.
Throughout the day, 365 days.
We're on the bike path. Did you ever go to Fitzgerald Lake?
Yes.
Anyway, you guys should talk about that.
Okay, moving on.
But that's not relevant to what we're supposed to.
All right. So that's it ahead of the plan. Anything on that? So, um, so the other, so I'm not gonna go through all this, I promise. But, so, you know, we, as our consultant, you know, they held three public, or two public forums and two focus groups. We've taken this through city staff, we've taken this through Energy and Sustainability Commission, and we're taking it to you. So we've asked them, sort of, for them to brainstorm, we want, just like any other plan, we want things at different levels. So we want clear goals that would last for the next, you know, decades. So that the city will be carbon neutral by 2050, that city operations will be carbon neutral by some earlier date, you have to be defined, that we'll be moving towards net zero buildings, all those kinds of sort of bigger picture things that don't come out of date. We're dealing with both, the terms that people usually use is climate adaptation is getting ready for climate change. We use the term resiliency because it's a broader term, and we'll be using it later in the comprehensive plan. How, you know, how to become a really resilient, strong city that doesn't just survive climate change, but thrives, that we're better placed with. And then likewise, the term people typically use is climate mitigation, reducing our carbon footprint. We deliberately use the term regeneration to think about, how do we regrow systems? So our conservation areas are degraded by invasive plants and animals. So we don't just wanna, you know, cope, we wanna think, how do we get them back? They're not gonna be the same thing they were 20 years ago, but how do we make them good, stable places long-term? So we have those big picture things, and then we go deep in the weeds. And we're trying to think about this in a way that aligns with the future. Oh, sorry, is that? That's fine, that's fine. So we're trying to align this with the future comprehensive plan, because it's sort of a work in motion. But, so we're thinking about resiliency, green infrastructure, stormwater, floodplains are the biggest part, but also things that we're less worried about droughts, and less worried about some other things. But, you know, still focused, and it's deep ways, there's certainly a risk for us. And so how, and a lot of those things will cut through it, and everything that you do in your day-to-day work. So, you know, we have some incentives for greener buildings in that URC, you know, if you want over seven units close to downtown, we have some incentives for greener buildings. You, city council passed in your recommendation, the PV-ready roofs. But what about that, we're gonna do this parking lot over here for having PV over the parking lot. So we're thinking about those kinds of things, both in terms of city actions, which applies to less on the URC, and on the regulatory scale. You know, one of the things that we do to push developers as much as we can, while not making housing unaffordable, it doesn't, it doesn't help us if people can't afford to live here, because a house is $20,000 more in Northampton than it is in Hadley, and then they go to Haven to drive here. I, my, we had something once when we were dealing with what became Florence Fields. And the thing I always remember is we had a very prominent person, you probably all know, who came before the board to say, you know, we shouldn't allow a single acre of farmland to be lost. And then I ran into her at, uh.
Hullwood.
Hullwood, thank you.
I was just a guest.
Which is like the best prime ag land in Manchester. How, shouldn't you be supporting Northampton farmers and being downtown and not doing, because we wanna think about those things holistically. So we are a city, so we can, we can do all these residency things, but not see what you see in some communities where we're protecting the city for someone who couldn't afford, you know, who couldn't, wasn't born in that city.
Wayne, I have a question.
Yeah.
So this is, this is a subset of some of the.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is a detailed version for policy.
Okay.
This was the zoomed-in version I used for the public forums. So it's just a couple things that seem to be most understanding, extendable, and neat.
Oh.
So it gives you a good sense. Maybe it's worth going through that just as a census. And you see some of the choices. So this community choice energy plus, let's walk through these things as examples. So, community choice energy plus thing I mentioned, we've just got a $70,000 grant. We're working with Cambridge and Somerville and Cincinnati and Saratoga Springs, you know, trying to think about models that would work in this area. We're working with Amherst and Palom closely, so we hope to do a CCA with the three of it, with three of us. But then we're working around the country, trying to find different models. Do you know what community aggregation is? So, you know, if you know the farmer's market, there's always someone who tries to convince you to switch to National Grid to use them.
Yeah.
So Massachusetts deregulated our energy supply 15 or 20 years ago. And so it used to be, how to buy your power from your energy company? Now you don't. You, you have to get distribution from your, from the national monopoly, where you can buy your power from anybody. Every big electric user in town has switched from National Grid decades ago. Northampton has, Smith College has. But small homeowners, maybe you're gonna save a dollar, and a lot of those people selling things are cheating you, or you're not really gonna make. So most people say, a community can become the default energy provider. So we're looking at stepping up to that role and being the default energy provider.
So this is different from like the council government's?
Same basic concept, but they're not the default. They want us to sign up with them. So we can go beyond the fault, we give that assigned customers to them.
I see.
And, and the way places do this is they will sign us, go out and buy, it's called renewable energy credits. And so if you put a solar in your roof, someone pays you for it, they might buy it. But they tend to do it short-term contracts, so they don't wanna take risks. And they tend to do it, it's not, it's not ad hoc. So what we want is to be ad hoc. We don't just wanna pay for someone's rooftop solar, we wanna get new rooftop solar in Northampton. And so that's, so we're looking at those things. How do you actually, and the other thing is, when you go home tonight and turn on your lights, no matter how much solar you're having in your house, the electrons that feed your house are not coming from renewable energy, right? Maybe they're coming from hydro every day. So we also wanna, there's some ways to play with shifting peak loads. So you can imagine, let's say, for example, we had a fleet of school buses that were electric. And the school buses get plugged in at night, you can have buses only charge when there's electricity available and not charge when there's not. And maybe during the summer, when there's peak air finishing, they're actually discharging. And so those are the kind of things in its infancy we're trying to look at.
So Wayne, explain to me how BE1 fits into this grid, this.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah. BE stands for Built Environment? BE stands for built environment?
That's correct.
And then where is that language kind of over here?
Don't know.
Or maybe BE three on-
Yeah, like I guess how do we reconcile like two major cities, like where?
Right. I don't know the answer, I haven't been inside by some of Franklin.
Maybe there's-
Yeah, maybe they pulled it out.
There might, yeah, there might be this made, this pulled out of the matrix for some reason, this-
Oh.
Well, see, there, for each action area, so, um, sorry, I should- I don't know the answer.
Okay, all right.
All right, I'm going to keep going.
Yeah, keep going.
All right, so energy disclosure, this is an area that's going to be a big community debate, so there's a lot of places who say the market's not perfect. If I'm going to rent a house or rent an apartment, I don't know what my future energy bills will be. And so you can ask, if you own a house, you can do a lot of energy efficiency and it's going to pay off in cheaper bills. You can get the capital upfront, but it's probably going to pay off. Some things pay off in a year, some things pay off in twenty years, you know, windows take twenty or thirty years to pay off and weather surfing takes six months to pay off. But the problem is if you're a landlord and your tenant's paying the energy bill, there's very little financial incentive for the landlord to make those improvements and the best way you make incentives for landlord is to have a perfect information system, right? If we believe in capitalism, capitalism works when there's good information. So some places have had energy disclosure, you have to tell us how much energy your building's using. Maybe it's a time of sale, maybe it's a time of rental, and so buyers, you know, buyers or users have that information and they can use that information, presumably a building that's super insulated. You know, my current house uses literally a third as much gas as my old house does. You know, when I sell my house, you can guess I'm going to brag about that. But if I sold my own house, I didn't say, this house looks like a sieve. You know, so how do you, how do you get that face in that? It could be just big commercial things that might not be. So that's energy disclosure. Some places-
How do you get that from the landlords? I wouldn't even know what, I don't know how energy efficient my properties are.
Yeah, so there's different ways to do it. In Indianapolis, they played with, we tried this for a while, it didn't really work, at something called Rent Rocket, which was basically just a crab sourcing data. So tenant, you know, Indianapolis is a college town, so students are switching every eight months, so it's easier and you basically just encourage students to file online. Obviously, you don't know who keeps the window open and the window open. But hopefully you get a big enough sample size.
It's interesting because you could require, I mean, maybe you could, you could require the use of things like Nest thermostats that are reporting that data.
Absolutely, you could require-
And then a landlord would have access to that data even though you're not the one paying the bill because it's separate, you would own the thermostat system, so, you know, like those kinds of things would do real-time reporting.
And the ones I've seen is the people who've done this for rentals have tended to be either crab sourced to use data or they're general. So we've tried, not very successfully, but we hired Mizer to model buildings. As we said, we have, we know how thick the walls are, we know some things about it. Can we come up with some general information? The, and obviously, but the bigger, so that Cambridge does this for bigger places and Cambridge, I don't have to do a lower door test, but they, you know, if you're selling a twenty thousand square foot building, you can hire someone for ten thousand dollars to do that. It's obviously not going to happen for rental places out there.
You know, you could find out if, because you could know if it's heated by electrical or gas or oil and the gas, gas meters are public information, I'm assuming, it's not like water.
Rental person can release it, but it's not being released. So that, I, let me go back, that community choice aggregation, we want to do this because we think we can do some really good things. But one very minor benefit, or maybe not so minor benefit, is as soon as we're in the business, the utility has to turn over the data to us. So we keep it confidential, we're not going to give it out, but it helps us with targeting. So we didn't ask, for example, we did look, because this is on the assessors data, we looked at how do people heat their homes? And one home said coal, my guess is that's probably out of date, but-
You never know.
Never know.
My neighbor whole pieces coal.
We looked at the homes that are heated with electricity, not, not heat pumps, which are great, but resistance heat, which is really expensive, and we were going to target that area, can we make some big changes there? And then it turned out this is the area by Ryan Road School that was basically filled wetlands and turned out you couldn't actually insulate those buildings because they have a major mold problem. So they're safe buildings because they're so poorly insulated, but the logic of thing of insulating them doesn't work when you live in a wetlands.
You don't use film?
This isn't my area, but that's what I was told.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the water's coming through the basement, so unless you solve the problem of the water coming in, you know. So, but, but you know, that kind of thing, I'm sterile, how do you get to the next step? We can start to do a better model of those things. You know, benchmarking, the way this term is used is the next step. Cambridge does this, and maybe the only place that does it, do it only for very large buildings. But Cambridge then says, this is only transfer, and I think it's over twenty thousand square feet, again, I may be wrong with the number, if your building is underperform, you have to bring it up to standards when you sell it, you know. If you've ever lived in a septic system, that's the rules in Massachusetts, you sell your house, maybe some standard, but you have to fix the septic system when you sell it. It's sort of this, and a bank will make you take the buried oil tank out of the ground, that's what benchmarking is. Again, I can't, this is not going to be the residential sector, but it could be for, you know, if Meadowbrook sold, you know, a project of that scale or, you know, something different could be out there.
Wayne, who came up with these strategies? Did the consultants, did your community meetings, did, did you and Carolyn come up with these?
Some of all of the above. So we're members of Urban Sustainability Directors Network, which is made up of people like me around the country who do this stuff, and they spend a lot of time, I did none of this myself, identifying so-called high-impact practices. There's a lot of stuff that's really sexy, it doesn't do much good, and so their goal was, okay, we can't do everything, what are the things that a small investor makes a huge difference? And so we mine that heavily. The consultants know what they're doing and they came up with a lot of ideas. Chris Mason and I came up with a lot of ideas and then the community meetings came up with a lot of ideas. And then obviously now we're going out and crowdfunding, you guys may come up with ideas and, you know, setting up some process. So, you know, BE three would, could potentially apply to you, but, you know, right now you look at site plan projects, but you don't do the point system, you look at everything independently and, you know, maybe there's sometimes the time we should be looking at trade-offs, right? We, you're talking about waiving some tree requirements when it affects PV, right? Two really good things. Street trees are amazing, property trees are amazing, PV is amazing. We wanted to get developers a lot of choice in how they do things, so maybe it's a point system. Maybe we say, we're not telling you the minimum here, but you have to do some goodies. We have a little bit sort of ready in that URB and URC, you know, for projects over seven units. Is this some other way to do this? And, and so we explore that. So that would come back to you. I'm going to raise through some of these that are less involved with you, but, right, education, maybe incentives, happily get home improvements, so we did this as Chris Mason's shop at Central Services, but we solarized Northampton and got, and encouraged, you know, PVM roofs. Right now he's working at Heat Smart, which is encouraging heat pumps.
Can we ask a question or make our recommendation? So, because that is, I'm glad you brought that up. So when I went through this, one of the things that would be good to see in terms of the language that we use is acknowledging either both mixed-use environments and homeownership that is not a single-family home. So like the Solarize Northampton program is not, like, it doesn't work for me because I'm in a mixed-use-
Yeah.
-condom, but, you know, I mean, we just permitted a new three-unit condo development downtown that's, you know, going to be considered, I think it'll be considered commercial, right? Because it's a tree, like they would have to get a commercial building permit and stuff. It's not, so we use language in here a lot, like, you know, homes and residence without acknowledging that, you know, even BE two is really important, but that's not necessarily just a landlord-tenant model, that could be a multi-owner, you know, multi-unit model that's, that's different. And I just think, especially in terms of sustainability, the irony is that that's, that already has a lower carbon footprint. If you have a three-story condo building downtown with, you know, one-car, no-car households, then, you know, a place on Ryan Road that has solar panels on it. So if we could like shift the language to just be more inclusive of, you know, those kinds of-
Yeah.
-things, that'd be awesome.
I see, I knew a old comm, a school comm, you have eighty plus units of school on a-
Is that it?
Yeah. And you're paying maybe more than seventy thousand dollars in lipencing, believe me. And you're trying to figure out how can you act? We cannot work with individual units, but at least in the common areas. So that falls in what you're saying, because we are just trying to figure out, because it's just not sustainable, it's like cost.
Yeah, that's great.
A lot of the, I mean, that's the thing, when it comes to the incentives and the programs, they, they often, you know, you find that multi-unit residential or multi-unit mixed-use is in this little kind of purgatory that, that just doesn't fit into a lot of the incentive programs. So that's, it would, yeah, we could sort of move towards something that, you know, where incentives are more inclusive, like, because, yeah, it's a hard situation to be in, even with Mass Save, you know, a unit owner, you own or rent. So you can't call Mass Save and say, come over and do an assessment.
We call that, I leave, do the common areas, but then the units themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's kind of a-
So it makes a lot of sense for definition and then at the bigger picture, you know, in terms of actual solutions to that. One of the things we have elsewhere in here is pushing more community solar.
Yeah.
So that, Park Road project you guys permitted-
Yeah.
-they're going to have community solar, so the idea is basically to do what's called virtual net metering.
Right.
So the benefit of having your own PV is you, you make the meter run backwards when you do it, but can you buy power three miles away and still virtually do that? And so that's, we're trying to do some of those efforts there. So in that regard, there's a state to change some of the rules. So heat pumps I talked about, we're trying to get, you know, because we want people to leave fossil fuels. Electricity in theory could be a hundred percent renewable, although it's not now. New, new buildings, we, so this is what you're going to see if we try to push the envelope for this. So the state has a building code and in Massachusetts, we're not, we're not allowed to have our own building code and therefore we're not allowed to do anything zoning, which is covered by the state. But we are allowed to do things in zoning which are incentive-based. So, you know, one of the things that Carolyn and I were talking about before is the seven units above that require a special permit. Maybe you say seven units require only site plan approval if it's net zero. Those kinds of things we're allowed to do, so we can create a strong incentive base, you know, so one of the things we're going to ask you all and Karen is, what are the things that developers have the hardest time with in our regulatory structure? And are there ways we can give some relief from some of those things in return for some other things that we want? And obviously, we don't want to give away things that we want to keep, I believe that's, that's the kind of conversation I want to go.
One thing I often wonder about is with the big employers in town, are any development of a big commercial building, there's a parking requirement? And are there some incentives that we can offer that if you have a plan in place for your, to subsidize your employees to use other kinds of tech for taste and then you give them something else, you know, to take off some of the here and there? I don't think we incentivize kind of-
But we do right now, so if your project's over twenty-five thousand square feet, you have to do an assessment. You don't have to follow it. Smith College is the most biggest success. When they built Fort Hall, they would have been required to build a new parking garage, second parking garage, which would have cost them ten million dollars or something. And that was when they increased their staff parking fees from ten dollars to a hundred dollars. They had opt-out, they did bike lanes, they brought Sivcar to Northampton. So that was a great success, that's one of only a few successes we have, but the cost of parking was so high that that alone drove them to, we haven't done it, which I think what you're saying, unrelated areas, drop the parking and we give you credit or something generally, not street use.
I ask a question. I was just thinking about, there is a distinction between old constructions and the new constructions, like old buildings, like we hear in old buildings, right? Is that a differentiation?
Yeah, it's a huge difference because we're, you know, we're a slow growing city. It's, you know, not like Las, you know, Las Vegas, thirty years from now, half the buildings will be new, but here, thirty years from now, ten percent of the buildings will be new. So, yeah, the rehab of existing buildings is probably more important to us in the long-term. You know, and the building code is getting stricter, so the building code requires the expansion to meet the building code. So there's no code that makes you clean up your house, but if you're expanding it, whatever you build has to meet the new code, and that's why the incentives become more important. So part of community aggregation is, can we think about incentives? The Nest thermostats are a good example, you know, how do you get people to do that? One of the things we've really been pushing is, because PV is sort of sexy and a lot of people want to do PV, and PV is great as opposed to using gas, but not generating the need in the first place is a lot better. So we do, you know, getting LED lights, getting heat pumps, getting more efficient buildings is a lot better than what the energy source itself is. So, yeah, we're certainly looking at that. It's going to be hard, it's a slow growth. Freeboard requirement, again, this sounds hard to do because it's mostly the building code. So freeboard is how high above the flood elevation do you bill, have to bill, so that if there's a flood comes, you don't have water to do it? And this, again, it's sort of going to be a big deal as we go through this five-year process of changing our floodplain maps, but we don't even know if our current flood elevation is correct, you know. So right now, if you're a small residential use, there's no freeboard requirement and yet the flood, a hundred-year flood may actually be higher. We think, without a lot of evidence, that the floodplain on the Mill River is probably higher than Los Angeles. Just based on a couple of areas of flooding that exceeded the flood elevation. So there's an ice block by two-twenty Pine Street twenty, thirty years ago, Maines Field has flooded beyond a hundred years a couple of times. And you can guess, if you're getting more rain with climate change, that affects small water shifts. The Connect River is so influenced by snow melt in Vermont, there's less snow, actually there's less flooding. EV adoption, again, how, you know, how do we encourage this? Obviously, this is happening around the country. Northampton's had EV charging stations as part of this, but what are the other things that we do? Do we require at some point, you know, someone's telling me a story about living in, I think it was Pathways in Rocky Hill at one of the co-hosting projects, and she bought an all-electric car and the first six months she had the car, she had to like sneak out at night and park at a fire station to charge and her husband would drive her home because she had no charging there. And it took a long time to get Pathways to add the charging station. Should buildings over ten units, over ten thousand square feet or something be required to have a charging station? That's the kind of stuff that that will come before you.
Couldn't you just put an extension cord outside your building?
I guess, I'd be really big cord.
A really big outlet. You could all go to the new Pride Estates and-
Oh my gosh, with the ten Teslas, super chargers.
I got there and could coffee.
We drove past there and there were two guys charging their Teslas. I took Carson to pull, I was like, we got to interview these guys and find out like who they are, where they're from. We did it, but, yeah, two in Northampton.
Wouldn't it be nice if they used the same technology as everybody else's there?
They, they use different technology.
Yeah, Tesla is a different, it's a different charging system than everybody else's EV. So Tesla's supercharger is different. I don't know why they have so many. But that's the thing, why there are so many, like, every time you drive past, you're like, there are, those ten charging stations are never all going to be used at the same time.
Well, it's Tesla's investment, it's part of the-
They must be subsidizing it to as much marketing as it is.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't understand why electric-generated cars are more efficient than other forms. I mean, they're, the electricity is generated by gas and oil and, unless it's nuclear, a tiny, tiny percentage, as you know, is sustainable.
So I think there's a couple of reasons. One is that the electric rate could in theory be a hundred percent, so it's like twelve or thirteen percent now, which is still better than possible.
Well, it's not that high.
It is, if you include large hydro, which a lot of people don't like, you know, so hydroquab, it is, we just do local, you know, the stuff that is less environmental impact. So, but in theory it could grow, obviously, you know, there are places that are, yeah, but, I mean, you know, New Zealand's close to a hundred percent renewable, it certainly happens in other places, it's not, it's not as technically impossible.
But right now, if you have an electric car, you're basically powering it with non-sustainable fuel.
Right, right, it's true, eighty percent or eighty-five percent or whatever it is, it's true. So part of it's the change, moving it towards, you know, you, you know, fossil fuels will never be renewable, in spite of what the Shell says, but, so that's part of it. The other thing is, even though there's, there's losses on electric lines, there's also, you know, internal combustion is not the most efficient thing. So the overall efficiency, I think it's exceeding gas cars, even with the line losses that get. Obviously, it depends on how far the lines are.
And then the, like, reduction in tail type emissions is gonna be a problem for that.
Right, that's a huge issue.
The tail type emissions is probably the worst part of cars, you know, especially if you're a cyclist or pedestrian.
I think those cars, they also generate their own electric producing, you know, driving. That's, I mean, my truck doesn't generate its own, its own gas.
Well, the electric truck, any hybrid, so the hybrid cars would generate their own electricity.
Yeah, I'm saying that's the difference between, like, my truck and a, one, like, the wonderful idea of a electric truck would be that it would generate its own electricity, so I could go an extra certain amount. That, that's where the efficiency is, even if it's using a coal power plant to generate its initial electricity, it itself generates its own electricity while it's driving.
Does that electric cars do?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and, and so hybrid cars do as well.
Yeah, whatever.
And then the other thing is, in this state, obviously, this isn't true in West Virginia, but in this state, you know, natural, I'm not someone who really believes in natural gas as being a solution, but natural gas certainly is a lot better than coal and oil. And we've been, as in this state, we've been switching there dramatically.
Sure.
So...
The way, though.
Yeah. All right, so density development, we've certainly talked about a lot. This is sort of what, this LUT 2 is probably what we've been most involved with. Equitable transportation initiative, this is a lot of this PBT, but even think about things like Valley Bike Share, which, you know, we located Valley Bike Share stations in part based on considerations of poverty. So Jackson Street didn't make sense except for that. Demonstration days, I'm gonna race through this, but, design standards for stormwater infrastructure. This is one you're gonna see. So, officially, most people coming before you are designing for, I think it's a two-and-a-half-inch storm. It's the biggest storm we expect to get, you know, every year. So there'll be bigger storms for hurricanes, but two-and-a-half inches, I think it's two and a half inches, we expect to get, and that's no longer an accurate figure. So we wanna come back to that, and we're gonna ask you to change zoning subdivision rules at some point as part of that. Compost, actually, Smith Oak is about to reopen the composting program again, so this one might get solved the next few weeks. Green restaurants stand out under the certification, but again, how do we get, you know, part of it? In the same way, LEED was most successful for hotels, where there's a branding. Restaurants care about how people view them, so there's more incentive for certifications. Create infrastructure, again, mostly stormwater, but also heat islands. Tree and forest vulnerability, I'm not involved with this, I don't know how much the tree committee is working on this. Rich Carslight and DPW, I think they're just some already. Karen, who knows more about trees, not a good bit of all. Food system and farming resilience. We were sort of part of a plan done when we did Grow Food North Hampton Project on Meadow Street. I'll have to come back and think about that. We, we had a grant from our office before that a mobile market, sort of the task for helping food in low-income neighborhoods, both in North Hampton and the hills towns. You know, job training, dealing with basic pests, which is sort of my office spends a lot of time on. Resiliency partner network, strong neighborhoods, shelter assessments, evacuation. So, you know, the reason our emergency shelters at Smith Oak is because you wouldn't wanna have it at the senior center, which is a really good spot, because it's in the floodplain. But Smith Oak is a long walk from anywhere if you don't have a partner there, so trying to think of all those things. So really, there's more to think about these as sort of the kind of things that we'd like to get community ideas from. I'm done, the rest is up to you, so...
So what's the next, what comes after this?
So, I get people's comments, I'm gonna email in for consultants. They're gonna come back with a new version and start assembling the entire plan. They're supposed to draft plans with us in about a month. I need to get some, some data so they don't have to be quite that fast, but then that plan will come back to you. It's a work, so, you know, I'm trying to email them Monday, so if you have ideas today or this weekend, send them to me. Whatever I get by Monday, I'll send to them. But they'll be sending a draft plan, so you get another crack at it. But, you know, be as creative as you can if it gets partnered.
Do you mean in terms of these strategies, specific strategies? Or in terms of the layout of the tools?
No, but, but the strategies. You know, but, and in particular, obviously, it's really easy to read something and respond to what's there. What I'd love to know is what's missing. That may be harder, you know. There is, and they definitely did a better job at resiliency than they did at regeneration. So I'm particularly liking what are they missing from regeneration, because not as much there as I'm like...
Yeah, I can say, I was able to go to a couple of these community meetings, and we looked at this, and often our little groups had a little difficulty with those two terms. Resiliency versus regeneration, and how it, how it plays out in these kind of strategies. So, it does take a little while to kind of figure that out.
So you said regeneration is the mitigation part?
Regeneration is mitigation part, right? How do, how do we get healthier, right?
So then I think with the sustainability plan, what happened is that when the final draft was done, it came to the planning board to be, not approved, but...
Yeah, approved.
Approved, and then moved on to the city council?
So in Massachusetts law, I think it's the only state in the country, plans have to be adopted by the planning board. They don't have to be adopted by anybody else. So we take everything before you, so it's important that you are comfortable with it. We always go to city council as well, because frankly, they have more money than you do. And so if they're not on board, it's not even a thing. So we go to them as well.
I have a little money.
What is that?
I have a little money. Oh, he has a little balance.
So, yes, we will go, but you're the ones, you're the ones who adopt it, and that is, that is immediate legal effect. Remember, one of the criteria in both special permit and site plan approval is compliance with the comprehensive plan. It also, I mean, you know, we're, times are flush now, but we're bringing in three or four million dollars a year in either direct grants or highway grants, I guess more than that, actually, highway grants. And these plans become an incredibly important part of, so it has those ripples.
So we should email you.
So, we as a planning board, will we like schedule another, like, more working session? Or we have a slow permitting night to talk about this, or...
Well, I think for this initial, I mean, we probably, we could do that. We could schedule another session when Wayne is not here, and talk through it, what's the next draft? It's, it's, I mean, it doesn't seem like we need to do, like, now, it seems like we can react to Wayne and send any comments that we have, and then once the next draft comes, maybe we can, before you come and present to us, we could have a little working session.
Yes.
So that we're able to kind of collate all of our ideas, and, yeah.
Because I'll be very honest, I probably won't go home and spend two hours looking at this.
Exactly what I'm gonna do, actually.
We'll kick this man off the boards.
Two hours would get you like, start.
So for this round, so don't presume that we'll do anything before this is the next round, but before the next round, if you could give us a heads up, you know, when the next draft is here, then I'll give us time to review, and then you can come back and present, you know. So, whenever that may be.
I would be curious to see like a star rating, or even just a visual, like, red, yellow, green, you know. Green is good, yellow, we're fair, red, we're falling off the map, we need help in this area. Something just to, to get a sense globally where the city should be focusing, it's where the shortcomings are.
So that would be on the sustainability plan that took place? And then, and then how the resiliency regeneration plan impacts or addresses that?
So, so what they're doing is mainstreaming the resilience into the comprehensive plan?
So it would be, so it would be adopted as a separate plan, it would become an element of plan, and then we'll come back. So, you know, I keep, I've been saying this for two years, so don't believe my dates. I keep thinking we're gonna start on the plan, and it's come up. So we're about to start, and we're, the walk-by came in, then this, now the LEED for cities certification. But when that's done, we're, we're starting to find, that's the next big project that I need to service.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
Do we have minutes to approve?
I've moved to approve the minutes.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? Could you move the minutes for me?
I did.
Okay, we're here.
I'm not putting you on the spot.
I moved to close the meeting.
Wait a minute, wait, did we vote on accepting the minutes?
No, we did not, we didn't say what the date or the minute to approve.
December 13th, I said that.
December 13th. So we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
For, accepting the minutes, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from December 13th, those opposed? Is there any other business in town?
Oh, we have a meeting.
Motion to keep Sam here another 30 minutes.
I got a quick, quick, little thing. Wayne mentioned next Tuesday night, there's a, there's a meeting about this one...
Oh, yeah, the track.
...walk, one trail around North Hampton. If anybody's interested in open space or recreation, and you wanted to come to that, I'm sure Wayne is gonna have enough chairs for members of the planning board, which would be great. Because it's gonna be, it's gonna be upstairs in the city council tables at Tuesday, Tuesday night, next.
Use the back door to, to unlock.
Where, uh, our meeting on February, the end of February is?
The 28th.
The 28th, I will point out here.
I don't know what time the agenda is.
Okay.[1777.54]